I call this meeting to order on 12/6/2023. The time is 7:10 PM. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been duly posted and a quorum present?
Yes.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of America. This meeting is being conducted under the provisions of the Mass General Laws, the Town of Lee bylaws, and the Town Meeting time. I would like to remind everyone of a few procedures before we begin. All registered voters of the Town of Lee will have a right to speak and vote. Each person may debate once, and each debate will be limited to five minutes. After all members have spoken, a member may debate a second time. No one may debate more than twice per motion. Debate may be further limited or extended by a two-thirds vote. A person that is not registered, a registered voter of the Town of Lee, will require a majority vote of representatives to speak. When speaking, please state your full name and address, and please use the microphones. All debate must relate to the main motion and directed through the moderator. Before making any motion or debate, you must be recognized by the moderator. Tonight, votes will take place via voice vote, and if we need to, we will do a vote via the clickers that you all have as a secondary vote. So the clickers, okay, pretty straightforward, but just let's review in case we gotta go to them. 1A, of course, is yes, 2B is no, 3 is abstention. Just double-check after you click your option in the window, it should confirm what choice you picked, okay? And we're gonna do a test here shortly, right, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, and I'll just add to that, that the numbers on the back, they're not tracked, they're randomly given, so it isn't anonymous vote unless you've given your number to somebody, they won't know. But it is for you to verify that your vote is cast. When you press the button, your number should turn blue. When the vote is closed, your number will turn red if you voted no, or green if you voted yes, or yellow if you abstained. And that's again, just for your own verification, so you know your vote was cast. The numbers are given out randomly, so we don't, we won't know whose number is whose. Other than that, if for some reason we have a problem with these, and I'm, the manufacturer has assured us, if you were at the last meeting, we had a little problem, that's fixed now, so we tested them for two hours before the meeting. But if for some reason technology does fail us, we can go to a standing vote as our backup, and that's per bylaw, so. I think we're ready to do our second test, so if our clerk can bring up the test. This is what it will look like when it's all done, so this is your test when you came in, we're gonna do one more, just to make sure everyone's good.
Are we all doing it right now?
Well, she's gotta open it.
All right.
It just takes a second.
Sorry, there is a delay between when we open the vote to show up on the screen.
Yeah, there's about 10 seconds. So you can go ahead as soon as the votes open. Everybody can vote now. Remember the last, whatever, whatever the last number is on your clicker, that's what's gonna count when the vote closes, so you.
Madam Clerk, please close the vote.
What's the number on your back here?
Oh, she doesn't have to read that.
Chris, are we all set with everything?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Now, you can close.
Madam Clerk, please close the vote. Without objection, we will proceed. Tonight, we will be considering nine articles. Article 1, Public Safety, Public Works Facilities. This is a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee recommends approval. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $36,700,000. One, to pay cost of designing, engineering, constructing, and equipping a public safety facility, related demolition of existing facilities, costs of relocating the Public Works Department to 1185 Pleasant Street, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And, second, to purchase the following parcels of real property for municipal purposes and described in a deed recorded at the Middle Berkshire Registry of Deeds, namely, 41 Railroad Street, Assessors Parcel 150018A, 000000430, Book 2773, Page 52, and 1185 Pleasant Street, Assessors Parcel 15003000000071A, Book 6572, Page 67, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Sub 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however that no amount shall be borrowed or expended for this purpose unless and until the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to repay any borrowing authorized by this clause from the property tax levying limitations of General Law, Chapter 59, Sections 21(c), also known as Proposition 2 1/2.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Before we begin to debate, I just wanna recognize Town Administrator Bryton to introduce maybe the architect and just make a note.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, so I wanted to give a quick overview, and then if it's okay with the group, the architect that did our feasibility studies here can give a little overview of the process, and then we'll open it up to discussion. So as I mentioned, I wanted to provide a brief summary of what we were trying to accomplish in this article, because it has a number of facets to it. Over the last few decades, the town, unfortunately, has built up a significant amount of deferred maintenance on a number of our buildings, while at the same time upgrowing many of our needs. So we have an opportunity today to take a step to fix many of these problems. So upon the passage of this article tonight, the question will also need to pass a referendum at the next townwide election, so I just wanna make sure everyone knows this is a two-part process. Two-thirds vote tonight, majority at the town election. If both are approved, then the following things will happen. One, we would purchase 41 Raro Street, which combined with the existing town property, which is the Iraldi Building, the old Quonset Hut, and the DPW garage, would be suitable for a new public safety facility. Two, it would purchase 1185 Pleasant Street, which was the former Daley and Cassell Building across from Meadow Farm, which would allow for a seamless relocation of our DPW, which currently lacks space and material storage in its housing facilities far past their life expectancy. Third, it would pay to demolish multiple buildings, specifically between the post office and Dresel Hall. It would also provide funding to, for demolition of the existing EMS building, which is currently held up by temporary supports due to structural issues with that building. It would allow for the future creation of a reuse committee for the current central fire station to allow new and continued community services. We would keep the central fire station, it's a beautiful historic building, and then funds, the biggest part of it, of course, is funding the construction of a new public safety facility that meets our needs now and into the future. It also creates a community space in between police and fire that would serve groups of 75 to 100 people. While this is an expensive article, it raises a lot of questions if we don't pass it as well. What do we do with our existing ambulance garage, an EMS building that is literally falling down? What do we do with the fire station that was built for horse-drawn apparatus? What do we do with the Iraldi Building that is in disrepair? Do we continue to remobilize our DPW 2102 during snowstorms and work out of a Quonset Hut from the 1950s with a significant amount of asbestos? You know, police are operating in a space that's almost 80% smaller than recommended under current standards, failing jail cells and poor conditions in that area. And, of course, we have an area of Main Street, West Side of Main Street, which is, which can be revitalized, and so this helps with that as well. So as I mentioned earlier, we had an opportunity to fix several decades' worth of issues in one article tonight. I think it's a great opportunity, and I think it's an opportunity worth taking. I wanna thank everyone for being here tonight, it's great to see a big turnout like this. So I would like to just turn it over to Brian Hughes from Jakunski-Hughes Architects to give a quick idea of the process. This has been about a 14-month process, and he can kind of explain what we did. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. For introductions, I'm Brian Hughes, I'm representing Jakunski-Hughes Architects, and I was the one that conducted the feasibility study for Lee, and it's been about a, for us, it's been about a year and a half, so this is a project that's been under design and under discussion for at least a year and a half. And what I bring to the table and help and assist the town with is my experience doing public safety facility design. We responded to the town's request for proposals that was publicly advertised, we put a response into that request for proposal, and we were selected out of the number of proposals that were received. And I think one of the things that brought us to the table was our experience. I've been planning, designing, overseeing, construction of public safety facilities for over 30 years, and I've been involved with over 90 facilities throughout Connecticut and Massachusetts. So of the 90, about 50% of those are Massachusetts-based public safety facilities, and we are constantly getting the call to assist municipalities, and it was very same thing that we're doing for Lee. With that experience, they're all municipal-based facilities. Each town in the Commonwealth has a need for public safety, it's one of the things that the communities have to provide to their citizens. And you'd think after 30 years of doing this, I'd be running out of wood, but when I come to Lee and see that the conditions are what they are, there's still work to be done. So what we had done and proposed and completed for Lee was a four-part process. The first thing we did, we sat with the public safety agencies, that being the Fire Department, the Police Department, we also sat with the Building Safety and Land Use Department, and we also sat with Tri-Town Health Department. We had to sit with them to determine needs, that was the first goal, is what are the needs? We got to then see what the existing conditions were. The needs are, as stated by each agency, to meet the requirements of their agency for today, tomorrow, and tomorrow's tomorrow. A lot of the growth that you're seeing in the facility has to do with current inadequate conditions that they're working under today. But I also wanna let you know that this is being planned for 20-plus-year growth. It's being planned for at least 20 years, because for most municipalities, that's how long the bombing will be lasting. And you wanna be assured that you're gonna be satisfied and not over the outgrowth of your facility within the life of the bombing. So yes, we looked at that, we looked at each agency, and identified what the space needs were for each program area, and what the site needs were for parking, and visitor parking, and site amenities. After we determined the needs and reviewed those with the municipality, the second goal of ours was to assess different sites. We did not wanna look at any sites until we first understood what had to go on the sites. So once we had that information in hand, we then evaluated sites, and we evaluated quite a few sites. We looked at three properties on Pleasant Street, we looked at the existing fire station property, and the need for, will the new facility function on that site, but also how can the existing fire station still maintain services, continue services, if construction was on that site? We looked at the Satonic Street site, we looked at the Fern Cliff site. The site that's being proposed tonight is the last site that we were asked to look at, and I can tell you it's the best site, and I don't know why it was left the last, it was the best site, and it was only made available because of the potential of the DPW moving off that site. And so this came late in the process, that we were asked to evaluate this site, and we feel very confident that this site can support the needs of what's being proposed there. So once we had a site determined, then we were asked to do schematic design.
Design is just floor plans that you see colored, on how the building will fit on the site, how the building will look on the site, how the adjacencies of each function will perform on the site, how we can maintain security confidentiality, all of the agency requirements that were in the space needs assessment. If it was in the space needs assessment, it's on your floor plan. If it's not in the needs assessment, it's not on your floor plan. So that's how this is a specific solution for your community, based on what the stated needs are for your town. Once schematic design was completed, then the last component was to send all of our work product out to a professional cost estimator, to get a fair market value on costs. That came back with a hard cost assessment. Hard cost is the cost of construction and site work. We're trying to estimate market value for when this project is anticipating to be bid. There's a long way to go between schematic design and a bid-ready project, and if we were to get, if we were to give, be given the go-ahead, we would need at least six more months to design a bid-ready set, at least two months to bid the project out to competitive bidders throughout the Commonwealth. So you're at least eight months out from when we are given a go-ahead. So this estimate has to anticipate any escalation and further growth of the market between now and when that was to occur. We also had to anticipate soft costs, we also put in project contingencies, because we are only at a schematic design level. So the costs that you see tonight are estimates, but we're trying to give our best estimate, they were done by professionals who do this for a living, on a total project cost. It's not, we need this much today, and we're gonna need so much later and so much later. We wanted to give the town a full overview of hard costs, soft costs, and contingencies. So with that, we have gone back to all of the agencies we started with, they've been along with us along the way, I thank them for their involvement, I think they're as excited for the project as I am, because I think the solution that's given maintains public safety services in your downtown business district. It's something that, once you have those facilities there, we find it's very difficult to have them leave the central business district. The businesses like to have these services close to the downtown area, because this is what also draws people to this facility, not just locals, but visitors. There's a meeting room here for community use, people would be gathering here. So it will be bringing people to this location, and what we've also experienced in other municipalities is if this property gets developed and improved, you will probably see improvements in and around this property. So there's also that synergy that could potentially happen in your downtown if this little stimulus project was to happen to satisfy the current needs that are, really in my opinion, they're willfully inadequate as to what you currently have. So I'm here for questions, if you have any, that's just a quick overview of what we did in the stages that we completed them, to give you what you're looking at tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any debate on this motion? Chief Brown?
Mr. Moderator, my name's Brian Brown, I live at 56 Robert Street with my wife, my 10-year-old son, five chickens, and three cats. I'm gonna read a brief statement that I prepared for this evening as to fire chief, and after this, I will rather speak as a taxpayer. Article 1 of the special town meeting is asking for new housing for public safety in the Town of Lee. As we consider this endeavor, we must note that it will be expensive. The sum of 36-plus million dollars is a lot of money. We are asking the town to invest in public safety for the present and the future. I would not be able to endorse this proposal if I didn't believe it was the right project at the right time. I can only imagine that over 100 years ago, the people of Lee were discussing how expensive the current central fire station was at that time, and they were probably right. For that time, it was probably very expensive. The current building was built originally to house two fire apparatus, one horse-drawn and one man-pulled. At some time, in the past, the building was modified to the facade that we are all now familiar with, it currently houses four engines. The sum of the parts equals the whole, that's my slogan, and all the firefighters have heard me say that a million times. The good men and women of Lee Emergency Services demonstrate that every day. Now I ask that the sum of the parts be your affirmative vote. Only then will the whole of safe and modern public safety housing be realized. One of the strengths of public safety agencies in the town is success in the face of adversity. This is how we operate every day at every incident, and we do this in service to our beloved community. Currently, we refine success in making our current working conditions work by facing daily challenges and figuring them out. However, we long for the day that we can design fire trucks to suit the needs of the community, not fit the size of the building. This is one of the many issues that we face. Additionally, we are faced with inefficient and, in some circumstances, unsafe working conditions, whether it be constant exposure to vehicle exhaust, inadequate storage, or lack of space, just to name a few. We have always found ways to work around these obstacles, and we will always provide the service to our community. The men and women of the Lee Fire Department will be there for you when you need us most, regardless of what building we are working out of. Like a church, the fire station is only as strong as the people inside of it. I ask on behalf of the people who serve you for your vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Please hold your applause, thank you.
Mr. Moderator. I am Bill Matthews, 54 High Street, and also Secretary of the Lee Historical Commission. I want to express my delight at seeing a public safety building draft design that harmonizes architecturally with the buildings on our historic Main Street, all of which are more than 100 years old. And I also want to mention relief at my understanding that DPW will no longer have to work in squalor. I suspect there will be no roses to mark the Quonset Huts demise. As to the current firehouse, it is a historic treasure, built from locally marble. Apparently, there will be a committee formed to recommend its productive reuse. From my recent visit during open house, I can say that it's already halfway toward becoming a decent town museum. We also very much need modestly-sized public meeting rooms. Both venues, a museum and meeting space, are sorely lacking in this town. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Hold your applause, please, thank you, appreciate it. Chief DeSantis?
Mr. Moderator, thanks for recognizing me. I also have a brief statement tonight, I'm Craig DeSantis, the police chief for the Town of Lee. I'd like to thank everybody tonight for coming out. I promised to be a little bit shorter than Chief Brown. Again, I wanna thank everybody for coming out, and thank you for your time and consideration, and for being present to vote on this important article, Article 1, which asks for a new public safety facility in the Town of Lee. As chief, it continues to be my privilege and honor to serve this community. I truly mean that, I'm very proud of this community and all that it has to offer. I'm also proud of the men and women that work for the Lee Police Department. I know them to be an amazing group of community-minded professionals that truly care about the community they serve, many of whom have a very personal and direct connection to this community. I can assure you, we're focused on keeping this community safe, and we do so while keeping a strong commitment to a small-town, community-engagement mindset. As we consider this article tonight, I ask for your support. I do so with the acknowledgement that it does come with a cost impact, and I don't take that for granted, I don't take it lightly. I want to assure everyone, regardless of the outcome of this vote, we will continue to do our very best to meet all the public safety needs in this community. Having said that, we are asking for your support for this public safety building, because we do need it. As we outlined in the prior informational meetings, and open houses, and some of the articles, we are currently faced with a workplace that's severely undersized, antiquated, and we're dealing with significant operational liability, as well as some very real health, security, and safety issues that we deal with. In short, we are seeking a facility that meets the workload and needs of this community, nothing more. The successful police department depends largely on the conduct and performance of the leaders in that department and the members of that department, but it also requires the trust and support of the community that we serve, and I stand before you, committed to providing that public safety that you all deserve, but I do ask for your support and trust. And with that, I yield back to the moderator, and again, I thank you all for coming out
Cornelia Kalisher, President of Lee. So first of all, I wanna thank all the police department, fire department, and ambulance crew for their service to this town, I really do appreciate. And I want to thank you for opening up a tour of the facilities, and I had not seen the conditions before in that way, and they are deplorable, I have to say. And so I support the cause, not the cause, the rebuilding. However, I also wanna say that I'm concerned in terms of our tax rate. Many people in town, I went to the town clerk, have had a 10% increase this year, that's a large increase, so I wanna think about that. I asked at the, I appreciate also the informational meeting, I think it was last week, so I went to, or recently, and that was very helpful too, I came in late, but I did learn and speak to people afterwards. And one of the questions I have is any way that we can reduce the cost somewhat, and one of the ideas that I'm thinking about, and I know, and I thank you for the architect, for your work, and the months of work, that I can't go to all the meetings, but is to not have the tower, and whether that would reduce the cost in some way. The reason I say this is not that I don't know, I understand the need, I've talked to the fire chief, I appreciate his explaining to me why they want it, and their needs, which is for having the hoses dry out and for training. I did call the Great Barrington Fire Department, and they have a one-story building, and they also have a, they don't have a tower. And so it's a one-story building, and they can dry their hoses in a tower within that one story and do training within there. So if there's some way to maybe reduce the cost in some way, I would, I hope we think about that, and it might still aesthetically look really pleasing. Let me see, one other thing I want to say. One thing I talked to Chris Britton, I thank you for that too, is that I understand the materials of the outside will be of materials that will last, as you said, for a long term, it's not just gonna decay. But I do want to understand the importance, or I want... But I do want to understand the importance, or I want to, what's the word? Encourage the continued maintenance internally, which is not from the ambulance building being built wrong or anything. It wasn't, the painting has not been kept up, et cetera, and so I would want a maintenance plan of how we're going to maintain this new building. The third thing I must say is that I really, as in the beginning discussions, Stockbridge was going to be part of this in terms of helping to reduce costs, that they would share some of the services, and I know that this is just a beginning step, but that would be another consideration before I really could decide. So I'm mixed on this, even though I'm a little nervous. I want my house, if it were burning, to be, I know you say you would do the service. So I'm mixed. I really feel that it's deplorable, and I want to say that I support doing a new building. It's absolutely needed, and I also have concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to mention, just to address that, and if Brian had any specific things about the material, but I believe it is a more maintenance-free material, not a wood structure that the EMS building was done. But we also will have a building committee, so changes that may need to be made, you know, those will be open public meetings, there will be a building committee appointed, and so details along the way like that can be addressed as well, so.
Mr. Blum?
I am Peter Blum. I live on Orchard Street. I'm the chair of the master plan committee. We had a meeting here in February, many of you probably attended. We collected ideas about opportunities for the town and problems for the town. Since that time, we've been meeting at least monthly. Lately, we've been meeting twice monthly, and we're going to come up with a plan, I'm hoping now and estimating it'll be the end of January, and we'll have another one of those meetings for you all to review it. When you see it, it'll contain a write-up, sort of a narrative of where we are, and about 10 sections on different thematic topics. One of those topics is community facilities and services, and it just so happens that Monday night, we had a meeting, and the community facilities, community services and facilities implementation plan received what we're calling a semifinal vote, meaning it's final until we get to the whole document to vote on at the end, but this section has been finally voted. And it has about 20 or so actions. Each action, each group of actions is listed under an objective, and objective one is to sustain and enhance community services and facilities, and under that, there are seven actions. The first one is to continue efforts to relocate the police department to a modern facility. The second one is to continue efforts to relocate fire and emergency services to a modern facility. So I want to be clear that the committee has not voted on this article and not considered the price, but it's no surprise to anybody who's visited either of the facilities on your issue that we're using now, that my master plan committee, the master plan committee, considers this a high priority to do something about the inadequate police and fire facilities. Thank you.
My name is Timothy Martin, 171 West Park Street. I'm not an architect, but I am a professional engineer. Looking at the design of this building, I think it's a great design, but I'm looking at a little bit bigger picture, and that is when a fire truck or a police car leaves this facility at a great speed, I see them coming on Railroad Street and Frank Consalati Way and onto Main Street at a dangerous intersection. To alleviate that, I would suggest straightening out Railroad Street and continuing a real street to West Park Street so that fire trucks and police cars could get rapidly out to West Park Street and/or towards Southern Points. The dangerous point is where this goes into Main Street, and I think that's, there's no left turn there presently. It's blind spot, there's cars parked around, there's people walking. It's dangerous. A second point, not nearly as important, is that of a river walk. There's a river walk planned from the Big Y up to the Lee Bank right now, and it deadens there. One of my ideas would be to continue the river walk behind all this area and heading north. That's not so important, though. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Forrest, 660 Greylock Street, lifelong resident and 27-year member of the Board of Public Works. When I first saw this plan come out, I was against it because of tactics and incentives, but the more I looked into it, the more I've become favorable of it. The buildings that were taken down through the Board of Public Works, we've spent a lot of town money trying to keep them things active. The Arali buildings, the roof leaks more than it doesn't leak. You can't keep up with it. The town garage is a butler building that its life expectancy was 15 years ago, was supposed to be done. In fact, we had one of our superintendents look into putting another building up on town property at the sewer treatment plant, and even back then, it was going to be $5 to $8 million just for that building. So the 102 purchase is definitely a gift. I mean, it's ready to move into. We got a building that will suit our needs for the upcoming future, and as I say, the property is just a gift that comes with it. So as I say, I think that the town really needs to move ahead with this project. It's something that's long overdue, and hopefully will happen soon. Thank you.
Any more debate on this motion? Come to the mic. Please state your full name and address, please.
Hi, Gail Ceracia, 161 West Park Street. I just have a question. The biggest thing I'm concerned about is that we're going to lose our Board of Health to possibly another town, placed in another town, and I'm a little bit concerned about that because we have this dump looming over our head, and I would like to see them stay closer to the dump site. So that's one thing that I'm a little concerned, because this proposal doesn't include them. So I don't know if something can be done about that. If there can be some discussion, that would be wonderful. And the other thing that I wanted to just point out is, there looks like there's two different things, well, three different things going on here, and I was wondering if we could make a motion to, for the property purchase, and then if, you know, I would like to make that motion if somebody wants a second, because I really think that the properties are, you know, we should definitely buy them, and if people are kind of like on the fence and it doesn't pass, at least we'll have the land, and then we could, you know, look at this again, hopefully sooner than later, and make it, perhaps, you know, look at some things that maybe we could cut or not, I don't know, but, you know, maybe make it more palatable to people. It's clear that we do need some updating on our facilities. I just, I just was thinking that maybe we should just take the land purchases and separate that as one motion or one article. I never did this before, so I don't know what I'm doing, but that's what I'm proposing.
That's, well, that's not really a proper motion, so.
Well, please guide me then, because you're the moderator.
Excuse me?
Please guide me, because you're the moderator. Tell me how to do that, or the lawyer, or whatever. So I'd like to make a motion to split the article into two. One would be, we vote on the purchase of the land, and then...
We need a written down. We need a proper motion in writing in town council.
I don't think that the motion's going to be in order, and I'll tell you why, because it's all presented as a loan with a bonding, and you don't even know what that number's going to be if you take the building out. So you're saying you want to buy the property regardless of whether we actually go forward with the reconstruction?
Well, I'm just thinking that that would be a good move for us because the piece on, there's one piece, the Beazin property, is like this little piece amongst a lot of town land. I think it would be really wise to purchase that, and then, you know, the garage on 102, the old daily billing, that would be really, I think that's a good idea to purchase. I just, I just don't want to, like, if this doesn't go through, I don't want to lose the land, basically, because the land, we will be able to do something with that land. We've been talking about a community center, and I think that people do want to see these buildings updated. I'm just not sure, some people are shy of the amount, so I think, you know, that would be good to keep our options open. That's why I'm asking for this.
I think this would fall into more burden some motion, wouldn't it?
Well, I might suggest, if council agrees, that if we get to that situation, Gail, that we could move to reconsider and then try to divide it, and then only do that if it's needed.
Yeah, however you want to do it. I just don't want to lose the land.
Would you agree here, Maya?
My concern is, there's no article that's gone to the town, putting them on notice that we're going to buy three properties for X amount, or even how much that amount is. So I just don't think it's fair notice. I think it's, I think this goes up or down.
So we would have to come back, then, for another vote.
I thought that you said at a previous meeting that you could take away, or, and I was also told by someone else that you can split it.
You can split, you can split articles, provided that the articles have each component that you're breaking it up. And what, conceptually, there's two things in here, but there's also a price tag if you break them up on each of them, and there's nothing in the warrant notifying the folks who haven't come here that we might be buying three properties and not building anything. That's the concern, because it's about, the purpose of the warrant is to notify everyone who comes and who doesn't come what we're going to be doing here. The folks who are here are, won't even know what that price tag is until someone goes and digs it out and puts it on there, and everyone else who didn't come might say, "Well, I didn't know you were going to do that."
Well, you discussed the amount of price.
Generally, you will suspend. Sorry, Gail, you've reached your five minutes. You can come back again and speak another five. Thank you. Chief DeSantis?
Mr. Moderator, I have a gentleman in the back that can't come up to the mic, so I'm going to go back to him.
Yes, please.
Thanks, Craig, and I am standing. Ed Leahy, 110 Mill Street, Lee, born and raised, whatever. The point I want to bring up and ask the engineer, please, is there a basement under this building because you are siding this on the Hoosatonic River, and there is a flood plain, and the danger would be that if there was a basement, that it might be susceptible to water damage from that river if some catastrophic happening, thanks to GE or whatever else, might occur. And if you could address that, please.
The entire facility is designed as a slab-on-grade facility, and to make the point of the flood plain, if you see a lot, the blue dotted line that runs to the rear of the property and then out toward the top, that's the 100-year flood plain. So the entire building is out of the 100-year flood plain, and it's all designed for slab-on-grade. The other thing to note about this building is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires us by code to label this an essential facility. An essential facility is a facility that has to withstand natural disasters. The state recognizes public safety facilities as providing a vital service to the town during natural emergencies, floods, hurricanes, storms. In that, we have to design this facility to a higher degree of wind load, snow load, seismic load, and all of the criteria within the structure has to withstand a very severe storm, the exterior and the entire structure. So that is factored into the cost, and that's another reason why it's slab up.
Charlotte Fairweather, 210 Church Street. Just a concern to do with access. The entrance is facing the river. The first thing that has to happen is it turns, and then it turns again. I'm sure someone's thought about this, but it does seem like a delay in providing service with the access being directed the way it is. That's really all I have to say. Right?
To Brian, go ahead.
All of the entrances and responders will be going out the, we call the front of the building, onto Railroad Street. The apron to the rear is, these are drive-through ambu, drive-through bays for ambulance, EMS, and for fire apparatus. So the frontline apparatus, as you see the red apparat, is on the front apron facing Railroad Street. The front entrance to the police department is right there, facing onto Railroad Street, and thank you for the pointer. The front entrance to the fire station is to the top of the plan, facing the public parking. So you're seeing another diagram of a fire apparatus, would be a returning apparatus coming off of Railroad Street, coming down, returning to the facility, and that's all done under, you know, slow speed, returning through the parking lot to the rear, and then driving through to be prepared to exit again toward Railroad Street. Thank you for that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bobby Paley, 170 Stockbridge Road.
Todd, please face the moderator. Everything is directed at the moderator.
Okay.
Thank you, Bobby.
I think that if anybody remembers the open space report that we paid for in 2015 and 16, we talked about our natural resources. We talked about the transformation of the town. We spoke about who we are post-industrial, and now the question is, who are we? I love this idea. However, it sits on the Hoosatonic River, and if we do not reclaim the Hoosatonic and make river walk that connects us up and down the county, then we have, then we become a ghost town, and we'll become a PCB town, and I think that's not who we want to be. Lee has always been known for innovation. It's been a leader in whatever it's done. If you think of the marble that came here, from here, if you think of the paper industry, if you think of the clothing industry, we were leaders, and now it's time for us to lead again. And I say that we cannot do this plan because we ruin river walk, and if we do not reclaim our ability to access the natural resources, get out of our cars, and enjoy what we have, you know, we're still standing. It's been a long time and a hard time, and Lee's been through a tremendous amount emotionally and in trauma as we've gone from being a mill town to being a 21st century town. So I hope you all understand, and I congratulate the town and all of our services for coming up with such a fabulous plan, but we cannot, we must not give up our most treasured resource of the river. And I tell you, if we don't want that PCB dump here, if we don't want 56,000 truckloads, I can assure you, when river walk begins to emerge, Mara Healy and Kim Driscoll and Rebecca Tepper and that entire new administration is going to pay a lot of financial attention to us, and that gives us our transformation. Let's not lose this opportunity.
Mr. Town Minister?
I respectfully disagree with everything Bobby said. I respectfully disagree with everything Bobby said. Sorry, but as it, as it, as it is right now, the building is several feet from the river, the DPW building, a Riverwalk could not happen the way it is right now. This is actually going to open up and bring things further back from the river and actually enhance the river, in my opinion. There is no plans right now. It's taken 14 years to get the plans from Lee Bank to Big Y. We're still on the, on the state tip on 2026 for that. There is hopes to continue it north. This plan allows for that to continue along the river there. It does offer the green space that the Riverwalk could continue. Where we are right now, this corner over here is a, is a Quonset hut in a Butler Building right up against the river in the floodplain right there. So I think this actually makes it a better situation for access to our river.
Edward Armstrong, East Street and Lee. I went to the informational meeting a couple weeks back, and I am 100% in favor of this, just so y'all know. I left there thinking of one thing that I didn't hear anybody on the panel say, including the architect, and thank you all for all your work. You basically need four facilities that you're going to combine and put into one facility. There was never anything mentioned about what it would cost to make four separate facilities. I think the price tag on four separate far exceeds your $37 million that you're looking at now. So with that being said, if we can combine the fire, the EMS, and the police into one building and put DPW on Route 102 and not have to build four new structures, I think that's 100% the right direction for the town to go.
Come to the mic.
So I've, just one comment and one question. So one, one thing, just, I'm not trying to influence vote, but just, just information for people to know. It's partially in the packet of information, but in terms of the taxes that we would incur, as far as my understanding, if we use the interest from the GE package, then it would be potentially around $340 a year increase in taxes. And if we don't, then it would be like $640 per household increase in taxes. However, it could be reduced if there are some bonds that we get. Just information. I'm not saying one way or the other, just so people have it. The second thing is, I have a question. I just, procedurally, if I vote yes tonight, can I vote no in spring? Or vice versa, if I vote no tonight, I can write yes in spring? Is that true?
Correct, yeah. So in the spring, it would be your, it would be that when you would elect the selectmen, it would be a question on the ballot. So, so nobody would know how you voted on either one. It's both anonymous, though. So it would be, your ballot would be vote for your selectman planning board, and then question one would just be a yes, no on that.
Okay, so my question's still with that. So if, if everybody here says no, which is not the case tonight, then would it still go on the ballot in spring?
It would not. It has to go tonight to get on the ballot.
Okay.
So two-thirds tonight is, you're really voting to put it on the ballot. Think of it that way.
Got you. Thank you, just for understanding. And then, is, is there room still in terms of the design, some of the questions that have been asked tonight? One of them was mine about the tower. Somebody asked about the road and the direction of the, et cetera.
So, yeah, there will be, as I mentioned, a building committee. So we have schematic designs now. Part of the, part of the price tag of the $36 million includes the engineering that has to be done, and so that's when we'll really get into the details of it. So the, a building committee would be appointed. They would have to have open meetings. People could come to that.
Okay.
And that, they would create the final project.
Okay, thank you very much.
How you doing? My name is Nick Lucchese, live at 85 Trees Terrace in Lee. My question is, what are we going to do with the old Amone Station?
Gone. So that would get demolished, and then, so the lot, so we're going to be appointing a reuse committee for Central Fire Station because it's right next door to that. Part of that committee would decide, do we need more, we want more green space there? Do we need some parking? Do we need, you know, whatever? That would be part of their plan, you know? Right now, it would just be, initially, it would be grass. And, and then, as we decide what's happening with, on the reuse of Central Fire Station, it would go to, to complement those needs.
Well, I can't understand why. I mean, we're putting a lot of money in this building that you have down here and stuff here, and why can't we rebuild that building to have the ambulance in there and have local guys in this town build it to keep the money in the town? That's something simple to do. And then, like I say, and put the fire department down there. Yes, we do need a new building for the town department, for the DPW and all that stuff there. Yeah, 102 is great. But I think this building is way too big for $30 something million to put everybody in there where we got other areas we can put people at. The ambulance squad's right there, right on the main street, they can go. Same with the police, they're on Main Street, Lee. Yes, if that building needs a little bit of work, why not put the money into that building? If you got a bad sewer system there, fix it. Why can't they stay there and put the fire department there and make a facility for them? Or either that, put the town department for the, for the, for the Lee guys, department to, put them there instead of buying the building down on 102. Why can't that be done? We're putting $36 million in a building. It's a beautiful building and everything, but it's in the back area, you don't even the hell even see it. It's off of Main Street. And besides, why can't we put up a nice big steel building? They got nice steel buildings out there. If you're putting on a slab, you can still do stuff on the inside of it. You can go pole barn, or you can go full steel building. So I just want to put that in. That's it, thank you. And also, too, as far as committee goes, I mean, as far as, you know, we got a place to have a conference and stuff, that's why we got this building here. We can have conference here. It's free and it's big. We got to have another facility to have a conference and stuff in? I mean, am I wrong or am I right? Does everybody think I'm wrong?
Can you spend the money?
Could I speak? I haven't spoken yet.
Up to the moderator. Mr., hold on, Mr. Stevens. Mrs. Leahy?
Yes, I'm Claire Leahy from 110 Mill Street, and I'm just 100% behind this. I think it's the greatest need our town has, and I think that building along the river will be just beautiful with a walkway, and it'll be a real exhibit, something people will enjoy walking by. I agree that it's going to bring people into town, and to do four building, three needs into one building just makes so much economic sense. I've been on the open space committee three different times, every five years since 2000, and I am into open space, and I'm fighting the dump, but this has nothing to do with that. Let's not confuse it. Let's bite the bullet and pay for this because it's the most important need we have. And I thought my husband, who's a former FBI agent, would have spoken to the fact that he's always talking about the fact that this town is right off the turnpike, and we are always in more danger than any other town because of the fact that it's so easy for crime to be committed here and people to easily escape. And he's harping on that all the time. Ed, why didn't you speak to that? Jeez. Thank you.
No.
Bill Stevens?
Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Moderator, I'd, I'd like to just speak for a moment to implore the architect not to consider glass and steel or brutalist designs in, in our town.
I think I did.
Railroad Street. This, this design will represent the rebirth and the revitalization of Railroad Street in a way that it has been anxiously crying for, for nearly 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's been, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Hold it this way. I'm Laura O'Shaughnessy. I'm from 55 Marble Street. I am not a longtime resident of this town, but I love it here. I think I got your map right, and I have a question for you people. I was going to say, this is a small issue, given what we're talking about now, but it really isn't. The Lee Food Pantry, I think, is in this area.
It is.
So is there a plan to redo that and maybe bring that up to speed so that they can get more food from, from the state government? Refrigeration and freezing and all that stuff?
Yeah, so we have a couple different options, and one would be from where part of the police station is on the first floor of Town Hall. The other would be the fire sta, the old central fire station. But we definitely have that. There's a couple, Trytown is mostly in the Iraldi Building, but the food pantry uses a space there, and our veterans' agent also uses a space. So they would be likely moving to either, again, Town Hall or the other building, and the VFW as well. So we, all three of those are, are definitely considered, so, yeah.
Okay, does anyone have any new information to add? All right. Seeing no more, we're going to do a voice vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes.
Ladies and gentlemen, hold on a second. Before you leave, council is advising us, just because we are going to have to give this to bond council, that we, because it was not unanimous, that we do a counted vote. So we will ask everybody to take their clickers.
Okay.
We don't want, we don't want bond council to question the validity of the vote, so.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote?
Sure will.
There'll be a little delay, so hang in there. Remember to check your screen, make sure you, double-check your pick.
Chris, you just want to let them know that the color will show up.
Yep, so. The, okay. Yep. If your clicker says one, that means when he closes the vote, it's a yes vote. If your little screen says no, or says two, rather, that means it's a no vote. So whatever that is when they close the vote is what will be cast. So a one for yes, two for no. And once the vote is closed, the colors will change from blue to either red or green.
And all these white areas up here does not mean, it just means that we didn't give all the clickers out, so, doesn't mean people did not vote. All right, so we're going to last call here before we close the vote. Madam Clerk, please close the vote. All right, awesome. 197 in favor, 26 opposed, two abstentions, abstentions. The motion passes. Article two, opioid settlement money. This is a majority vote. Finance, where's everyone going? This is why we had Open Town Meet, so everyone can come. All right. I'll see you at Mo's in about an hour. Okay. This is a majority vote.
Yeah, gather.
Yeah. Settle down. See you later. All right, this is a majority vote. Finance Committee recommends approval. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $55,967.21 to the Rural Recovery Center, and $11,200 to the Lee Police Budget for the purpose of the funding of substance use disorder prevention, harm reduction, treatment and recovery programs, as further detailed in the Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement for statewide opioid settlements. And that to meet this appropriation, $67,167.21 be transferred from the opioid special revenue account, reflecting the amount allocated by the Commonwealth to the town of Lee in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Opioid Settlement Fund. Second.
Who seconded that?
Second.
Sean Rendian seconded that. I would like to recognize Mr. Town Administrator.
Just, just to clarify what we're doing here, real briefly, Mr. Moderator, the, every town in the Commonwealth receives these funds from a statewide settlement, from the Attorney General. We receive $67,000 and change. They have to be, this was, was money that was given to us, but we have to spend it on opioid-related items. So we have two basic things, the Rural Recovery Center, and I do have a gentleman here, if anyone has any specific questions for him, he's from the Rural Recovery Center in Great Barrington, happy to answer those questions for you, and thank you for being here tonight. They do serve residents with recovery for all of Southern Berkshire, including Lee, Stockbridge, Great Barrington, and Lennox. So that's one of the reasons we have money going there. The other is in our own police department, the money has gone to Narcan training, a very small amount for that. And the other is we have a shared co-responder, social worker, substance abuse responder that works with the Lee, Lennox, and Stockbridge Police Departments, and so that, part of that funding is towards that position. Well, if anyone has any questions, again, specifically about rural recovery, we have a gentleman.
Gary Pratt.
Gary, thank you.
Yep, Gary's here. Okay, is there any debate on this motion? All right, seeing, seeing none, we'll do a voice, voice vote, majority rules. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $25,000 in legal and acquisition costs and $110,000 in land purchase expense for a total appropriation of $135,000 to enable the town of Lee to acquire for conservation purposes under Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the deed to the town of fee, simple interest, or less of a parcel of land on 505 Stockbridge Road, consisting of 25 plus or minus acres of open land identified as parcel 1500230000025. Book 1672, page 327, recorded at the Middle Berkshire Registry of Deeds, in the records of the town assessors, a map being on file with the town clerk, together with all rights and easements, and subject to all easements, said land to be managed by the Town of Lee Conservation Commission, and that the town, this appropriation, the sum of $135,000 be transferred from the undersigned Community Preservation Fund and/or Open Space Recreation Fund balance, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit, on behalf of the town, any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the United States under the Self-Help Act, MGL, Chapter 132A, Section 11, and/or any other state or federal programs, including those in aid of conservation land acquisition, and/or any other, any others in any way connected with the scope of this. acquisition, and/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this article. Said gifts or grants to be deposited in the undersigned—in the undesignated Community Preservation Fund balance, and that the Board of Selectmen be directed to grant a perpetual conservation restriction in said parcel of land, meeting the requirements of MGL, Chapter forty-four B, Section twelve, and MGL, Chapter one eighteen, sections— sorry, one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one through thirty-three, and to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to effect said purchase, said funds to be expended by the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Bailey seconded. Finance Committee does recommend. Mr. Town Administrator?
I think Sean drew the short straw today to get that motion to read.
Yes.
But just in kind of in plain English, basically, up on this map, the town owns all of this land here, and the town owns this land here, which is Longco Park. There's a little strip of land here, it's twenty-five acres, that would connect all this into one large parcel, roughly two hundred and forty acres. We have an opportunity to buy it. A couple of years ago, the town voted to be a CPA community, so every year you pay taxes, there's a one and a half percent surcharge that goes into a fund. The fund can only be used for open space such as this, historic preservation, or affordable housing. So you've already paid the money, it's not affecting the tax rate, it is one of the approved uses. There was a couple of questions about the conservation restriction. There's already— this is already conservation at Longco, so it would continue that restriction into this yellow area. It does not affect this part of the land, that still could be used for other purposes, but this particular one would kind of continue that conservation from Longco Park.
All right, do we have any debate on this? Come to the mic.
I support this. I just have a quick question. Cornelia Kalisher, I just have a quick question. Who would hold the conservation restriction?
Yeah, so that— this is authorizing the Board of Selectmen to go into that process. So we have reached out to the Lee Land Trust, and that would be our first choice to hold the restriction.
Okay, that's all.
And they have expressed interest, but I don't know the current status. I think I saw Linda here, but we have talked about it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, seeing no more debate? All those in favor, vote aye. All those opposed, no?
No.
Article four. Disposition of barn and one point two acres of residential land on three hundred Stockbridge Road. Finance Committee recommends approval. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to dispose of one point two acres of land and unusable unoccupied barn structure at three hundred Stockbridge Road. Assessor's parcel one five zero zero two four zero 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 zero, book one four one seven, page ten twenty-four, recorded at the Middle Berkshire Registry of Deeds, as shown on the map on file in the town clerk's office, and to authorize the select board to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary for this purpose.
I will second that. Mr. Jones seconded. Any debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Town Administrator?
Again, just a quick rundown. This is what it looks like right now, the barn that we're talking about. And the parcel is landlocked that we'd be selling, so there's no frontage with this. It extends lot twenty-two right here where the barn is. There's also another concrete sort of—I think it was a silage bunker or something here. So it just extends this, there's no frontage to it. Essentially, because we just approved the purchase of twenty-five additional acres in this parcel under Article ninety-seven of the state constitution, it does allow us to dispose of some— so this is the one opportunity sort of that we have to do this. The current owner of this house is just about ten feet from this barn and has expressed interest in purchasing it. If we don't sell it tonight, town would keep it, but we would be coming back to ask for some money to either knock it down or fix it. But we can't—it is kind of a hazard to leave it like this, so kind of look at it, like we can collect some money on this and sell it, or we can come back and pay to tear it down, so.
Okay.
John Cody, Fifty-first Street. It's a shame this barn's gotten to the shape it has. I know that land's been under lease for quite some time, and I thought part of that lease was to help save this structure, you know, keep a roof on it and such, but obviously it's water and a bridge at this point, if you look at the pictures. I also like to express my gratitude that we voted for the last article to include this piece of land, to, you know, make this a big contingent area for the town of Lee. And I hope in the future that we use this area, do the best we can to make it more accessible for the town of Lee to use this property, because that hasn't been the case in the past. And I guess I got one question. How did the amount of this— did you get to that amount? Was that?
Yeah, based on the assessor's value.
Okay. Now—
Which was, I believe, thirty-one thousand dollars.
There isn't any part of that— would it interfere with the access? Because that—it's a big piece of property, but the access is very limited to it. So this would not interfere with that access in any way? Because this is basically the only access right there, right?
I believe it's a little over two hundred feet right here.
Okay.
Of frontage. But purchasing the other property also has access from Church Street as well now.
Okay. All right, I guess that's all I got. Thank you.
Any further debate? Seeing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes. Article five. If I can find it.
But I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the purpose of paying previous fiscal year invoices. Said sums to be paid out of the current fiscal year 2024 budget for each respective department. Fiscal year 2023 invoices for the DPW total one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents. RWs, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. PLT, two hundred dollars and twenty-five cents. CINTAS, one thousand sixty-eight dollars and nine cents. Fiscal year 2022 invoice for water and sewer, ARC GIS, four hundred dollars. Fiscal year 2021, 2022 invoice for fire EMS, Stryker, three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Fiscal year 2021, 2023 invoices for council on aging, police, and DPW, AWSI, one ninety-seven, that's for drug testing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Renier. Any debate? Mr. Town Administrator?
So again, just a quick explanation. First of all, I apologize that we have to bring these before town meeting. There was a couple instances that caused these invoices not to be paid, mostly two things. One, we had a transition of staff, and a lot of invoices now are sent via email, and the company ended up sending it to someone who doesn't work here anymore, and a lot of those are—you know, what you see on your email, do not reply to this, so it didn't get the email back saying that they didn't get it. The other, besides that, was with—the besides the transitions, we did have, I think, one situation where on the EMS, it was a late billing on that particular— from that vendor. But it is not actually—we're not raising and appropriating any additional money. The departments have— will be able to take it out of the current fiscal year appropriation, but we do need a nine-tenths vote. So if it's not unanimous, I would just ask that the moderator call for a clicker vote on this, so we can make sure. And it's nine-tenths because we're asking for previous fiscal year invoices at a special town meeting, so.
Okay, any debate? Seeing none. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Next, art—
Make that note.
—unanimous. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You got it. Article six. Acceptance of MGL, Chapter forty-one, Section one ten A. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one ten A, which allows public offices in a city or town to remain closed on any or all Saturdays, and the provision of Section nine, Chapter four, shall apply in the case of such closing of any such office on any Saturday to the same extent—to the same extent as such—as if such Saturday were a legal holiday. Acceptance shall take place upon passage.
I'll second that. Mr. Bailey seconded. Any debate? Mr. Town Administrator?
I promise this will be the last one, and then the planning board could talk, but just to clarify this, because the article is very complicated, but the reason we're doing this is very simple. Right now, we have not accepted this MGL. The key word here is it allows us to remain closed, and the reason for this was in 2022, the legislature passed the Votes Act, and I guess they didn't have a calendar with them when they did it, but they set—they set ten days, ten days being the last day you could register to vote, which means every Tuesday election, with most of them are fall on a Saturday. So if we don't approve this, we have to open the Town Hall and pay staff overtime on a Saturday in case somebody wants to vote— registered to vote, rather, on the Saturday rather than coming in the Friday. So it's not a—it just bumps that last day to Friday rather than Saturday, so.
This is on. Alexander Headinger, Ninety Silver Street. I have a question about if people are not able to come in during workdays, during work hours, what are the other ways that they can register to vote? Is there another Saturday, or is there— can they do it online? Can they do it in other ways?
Yeah, absolutely. So they— so they can come in, of course, during business hours. They can also—if they call the clerk's office, we can mail them a return postage-paid registration form, and they can register online at any time. So on the secretary—we haven't linked ours, but it's through the Secretary of the And we— on the last day, we're still—we are required to be open and refer to the clerk on that, but we are required to hold later hours on the last day as well to be more accommodating,
Seeing no more debate? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Article seven. Zoning bylaws. Short-term rentals. We have the chairman of the planning board, Mr. Blum, here.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, he stood up, sorry. Motion. Yeah, motion. Do I have a motion?
So, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw in Article nine, supplemental use regulations, by adding a new Section one ninety-nine point thirteen as published in a warrant relating to short-term rentals.
I will second that. Mr. Jones seconded. Mr. Blum?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The planning board recommended this unanimously. We, in recent years, have had many town residents who have begun to do short-term rentals through outfits like the internet-based vacation rental by owner or VRBO, and questions have been plentiful in the administrator and clerk's office about, are we allowed to do this? If we are allowed to do it, what are we required to do in addition in order to ensure safety and community benefit? And a lot of the towns around us have enacted varying kinds of restrictions on this. We've written up a fairly long summary of it that's in the handout. It also explains why we are proposing what we are, and it explains how some of the other towns differ from the choices that we've made. I won't bore you with the details, but I'll be glad to answer any questions. In the meantime, I have an amendment, which I thought I had in my hand, but I don't. Wait a minute. I'm sorry to say that I want to take the time to propose an amendment. It's a small matter, but the amendment— is that available on the screen for the members to see on screen? No, okay. So the situation is that one of the rules that we have proposed in the substantive standards is that, in general, it's over the top level, corporations will not be able to do short-term rentals. The reason for that is that in some places, the housing stock available for people who want to live in housing permanently has been reduced because corporations have bought up houses on the market and then put them on the short-term rental market. And so we want to discourage that, but we realized that in some cases in town, people are doing short-term rentals, but their property is not listed in their name individually, it's listed through a so-called LLC, which is a specialized kind of corporation. So we wrote an exception for LLCs. Then, quite recently, we realized that, oops, we did—we took care of the LLC, which is really just a homeowner in a different legal form, but we didn't take care of something called a revocable trust, which is another item that people use. Apparently, if you're a—if you go see a state lawyer, the state lawyer is likely to tell you that you should put your property in a revocable trust that will avoid probate later and when it's time to pass it on to the next generation. So we believe that there are a lot of people in town who have their property in revocable trust, who would like to be using— doing short-term rentals, just like the LLC people and just like the direct ownership people, but we overlooked them. So I need to propose an amendment to treat the revocable trust owners in the same way that we treat the LLC owners. And in so doing, I propose that we amend Article seven, which covers one ninety-nine dash nine point thirteen, subsection D one, as follows, and then there are three different changes. And I'll read the revised section when I'm done with this. In the first line, after the word nevertheless, by striking the word a and inserting instead the words, any revocable trust or. The second is—in the second line, by striking the word principal and inserting instead the words, sole real estate asset and. Third, in the third line, after entities, by inserting the word trustee. So basically, I've added another category. Now, let me read to you what the proposed text would be as amended. One, property owned by a corporation, trust, or partnership, period. Nevertheless, any revocable trust or corporation may operate in STR if its sole real estate asset is a single residential property in Lee, semicolon. That property contains one or two dwelling units, semicolon. And their property is a partner of residence of the entity's trustee, majority stockholders, beneficiary, or partner. So that is my motion for amendment. Mr. Moderator?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Whoop, I'll second it for discussion.
Mr. Bailey, yep. Seconds.
Okay, any further debate? Come to the mic, please.
I just have a question.
Sure.
I was told to ask you.
Speak to the mic, though. Speak to the mic.
I asked this question today at the town office.
Yes, can we have your name and address, please?
Judith Ambry, thirty Beaver Dam Road, Lee, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I live in Conservation Area, CR, and I wanted to know if this article, as well as the accessory dwelling unit, applies to conservation land, CR.
These are both ZNE changes, and if you amend it's restricted by a covenant or other kind of restriction. or other kind of restriction, it would not affect that restriction. So if you're, if it's in trust, for example, or Lee Land Trust, for example, I don't know if they have any land like this, but if it says it must be kept open land, then that would remain unaffected by any zoning change that we might enact here. It's still a property restriction. It stays in effect. Does that answer your question?
I think she wants to know if it applies to all zones.
Oh, it applies to all zones. It applies, yeah. It's, it's not, it's not in a particular zone, yeah.
Okay.
ADUs as well?
Same, same answer for, same answer for ADUs. The ADU article, which is not yet before us, is, is not, I don't recall anything that's particular to a zone. There are some general restrictions.
Let's, let's wait on that. Let's address what we got in front of us.
Hello.
This is on the motion to amend.
I have a comment about the general, not.
Let's stick on the motion to amend and get that, and, and then we'll go back to the main motion and do a vote on that. Anyone else have any comments on the, want to debate on the amendment? All right, seeing none, any, everyone, everyone say aye, who is for?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, the motion to amend, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the main topic at hand, main motion at hand. This is. You're not, you're not, you're not in order. Get up to the mic and get in line, please.
Hi, my name is Hayden Coon. I live at one-sixty-five Main Street. Just wondering if anyone up here knows how many single-family vacation rentals there are, and how many single-family homes there are, you know, what's the percentage?
I don't, I don't know directly. The, it's possible somebody here might know, because short-term rentals produce revenue for the town, and they're registered with the state, and we've matched, to some extent, the definitions that the state has for tax purposes, but I haven't reviewed the statistics to know how many there are. I have the idea that it's around a hundred, in the hundreds, but somebody else may have a better idea.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have those, like, the data on what we've collected from that with us tonight, but.
I guess, I bring it up, I moved here in, you know, twenty nineteen, and also, you know, with everything that happened after that, and originally liking Airbnb and short-term rentals, I've, I've seen what it's done to small communities, and, you know, we brought up LLCs and corporations, buying them up in other towns and displacing that, and I don't think that we are exempt from that issue. You go on Airbnb and you search Lee, and there's over two-hundred properties that come up, while, you know, I try to find a rental unit for somebody else, and they can't. You know, my brother's trying to buy a house. He has a very good job, college degree, he can't afford it. And my property value in four years has increased sixty to eighty percent, which sounds great for me, but, you know, that comes at a cost, and, you know, Airbnbs in residential units, I, I have a problem with. I, I don't, I'm not in a residential area, I'm on, I'm on Main Street, but, you know, when you live in a residential area, you want to have a neighbor, you want to know who lives next to you. You don't want people on vacation with dogs and whatever coming, you know, new, there's a safety issue there. And every, you know, Airbnb, that's, that's one less coach, that's one less kid on the team, that's one less member at church. Sure, they bring in tax revenue, sure, they go out to eat on Main Street, you know, but I think that our community has, is in a housing crisis. I got the email today, we're going to, you know, subsidize home renovations, we're going to build over a hundred affordable units, you know, down the street at the Eagle Mill, which, it's all great, but, you know, we're forcing middle-class people into renting and not being able to buy, and it's directly related to short-term rentals and Airbnb, and I would like to see more done by the town to prevent that.
Hi, Jessica Davis Garrity. I live in Navan Avenue, and I'm just curious, is it affect also if it's in your?
Please talk into the mic.
If it's in your deed, can that be affected? Like, if it's written up in the deed, you cannot?
Right, it wouldn't affect.
It wouldn't affect. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, just in regard to a corporate question, speaking as, now setting aside from my planning board role and thinking about the master plan committee work that we've been doing for the last year, housing is a very big issue here in Lee, and all of the stuff that you described is absolutely happening, and I think the members of that committee know it, but it's also a regional issue. It's, it's the same in Vermont, it's the same in eastern Massachusetts. And, so we're not all that unique here, although it's, it's a pressing issue.
It's having Airbnb, it's having all these towns.
Yeah, and I, but I think that, that what we were trying to do, first, I want you to recognize that if a corporation buys up a house in Lee today and offers it in short-term rentals, they can do it, and they maybe have been doing it. And what this says is, generally, no corporations can do that if we enact this, but we tried to write a narrow exception for basically the family corporation that, you know, that's holding its property in corporate form. One of the criteria is you have to have in such property in Lee. So it could be, you know, that Manhattan Bank comes in and buys one property in Lee and reincorporates as an LLC, and yes, that would be a loophole, but we don't really think there's much chance of that. Mostly, we expect corporate ownership of STR. Short-term rentals will be prohibited by this new bylaw if it passes.
Josh Blum, two-oh-four West Park Street. I would be curious to know if the planning board looked at the models of enforcement that the other towns in the Berkshires have. I don't think that this needs to be amended or changed at all, but I think if you look to the future of how you look for the enforcement of this bylaw, we saw, I see in Stockbridge and in Great Barrington, they have, they're using some form of online resource that can track where, basically where people are using their homes for Airbnb and VRBO are skirting the laws of paying their taxes. And so they're going after the, the, the property owners that do not pay their taxes to the town. I don't personally think that, that mechanism has been so successful, but I'm sure that it hopefully has recouped, I hope it has recouped some of the investment that the towns have put into that money. So if you haven't looked into that, after, hopefully after this has passed, it may be something to study for the future.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I'm addressing, Josh, exactly the way you put it, but we did spend quite a bit of time talking about whether we wanted to propose this as a zoning regulation or as a general bylaw. And one of the advantages we thought of doing zoning was that the enforcement questions were answered. We had a standard policy about how to enforce zoning violations, it's three, up to three-hundred dollars a day and potentially an injunction. So we didn't have to put any penalty provisions in because of the choice we made. The other thing I heard in what you said is, what about tax enforcement? And I think that the fact that this requires a registration for the first time in any registration of short-term rentals at town hall, we allow people to, if your neighbor's doing a short-term rental and is appearing on a website, and allowing you to call the town hall and find out if they're registered as an STR and to turn them in if you want to.
Peter, if I may, just on the software part, Josh. So there, there is software, and I'm very familiar with it, and we have looked into that in preparation for this, so we, we have talked to some vendors, and we are looking at that to use it. And as Josh said, it's, it actually goes through and constantly is searching Verbo and Airbnb for your town, and alerts us who is actually doing it, and then we can see if they're registered. The platform also allows them to register and pay online, and that sort of, and get there. So it's, it's kind of a platform designed for towns to, to regulate this. So we have looked into it for sure.
Okay, seeing no more debate? Oh.
I have a question. Who's, who's in charge of the registration for said Airbnb's?
It would be you.
Well, I'm worried about that. Well.
You weren't going to tell me to lie.
After, but. All right, seeing no more debate? Those are. Mr. Moderator, we have one over here.
Actually, actually, it's, it's the select board. Somebody at some point in the process said, don't make her responsible for it, so it's you guys.
Hi, Alex Hedinger, Ninety Silver Street. I'm curious why there's not an annual inspection.
Well, probably a couple of reasons. One is, it does say that any STR property is subject to inspection at any time, so the fire marshal could inspect, and the health, the tri-town health people could inspect. It says that in the, in the bylaw. They could, but, but some towns, some towns do have automatic annual inspections, and we didn't vote for that, partly because we didn't think we could get it, pull it off at a hundred dollars a year fee. We thought it would generate the need for a lot more work by town employees, and we weren't sure it was worth the money.
Any more debate? Seeing none. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes. Next article, Article eight.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section, one-ninety-nine dash four-point-five, to the existing zoning bylaw, as published in the warrant relating to accessory dwelling units.
Second. Mr. Renier, seconded. Mr. Donovan?
Good evening. Buck Donovan, current chair of the planning board, District One, one-forty, Lander Road. Peter took the first one for me, I get this one. Accessory dwelling units, okay? It's an in-law apartment, it's an apartment above the garage, it's a detached apartment. We've, up to this point, it's actually illegal in town to have a detached apartment. This would make it legal. I know there's a lot of them out there already. Oh, well, I don't know. We've set size limits in it, parameters for the size of lot you have to have, you can't have a real tiny lot, and I think it's going to be, it, it could really open up some nice possibilities in town. Any questions? Ah, yes, sir.
Jim Harding, one-thirty Orchard Street. In paragraph C, number seven, says, short-term rentals, no ADU shall be offered or utilized for short-term rental. Is there anywhere in this bylaw that says that a couple that's downsizing can't move into their ADU and rent out their main house? Because that seems to be against the, the sort of thought process behind this. Sorry, I'm addressing you, of course.
Thank you. Loophole.
It, I mean, it's not a small loophole. It, it directly goes against the, the, the reason for this. So can I, am I allowed?
Maybe council could, yeah.
To amend from the floor?
Yeah, so you're asking if someone built an ADU, could they rent their home for a short-term rental?
They can move into the ADU and ship, and.
Under this, they could.
Right. I think that's a bad idea. Can I amend from the floor?
What's your amendment going to be?
The amendment would be, no property with an ADU may use either property, either structure for a short-term rental.
Okay, I understand that.
Could, could you repeat that?
Probably not the same way, but I'll try.
I was going to do this, Mr. Roy.
Yeah.
I just think that effectively outlaw all of the, the yards.
Can somebody explain what that means?
Would you like me to?
Jack, go for it, that'd be a good trend.
Well, while they're writing that up, I think what we're talking about is, right now, right now, you live in a house, and if you want to have an accessory dwelling unit, it's limited in size and scope, and the bylaw, the way it's written right now, says that, okay, you can do that, and what we're trying to do is encourage affordable housing, so therefore, it's a law, you could rent it to someone, it's basically thirty days or more, is not short-term. If it's thirty days or less, it's short-term rental. So what it, what he's saying is that right now, the way the bylaw is written, is that if you wanted to have an accessory dwelling unit and not rent it short-term, but you could move into the accessory dwelling unit by definition and rent your main house as a short-term rental. So what they're trying to say is, no, we're looking at housing issues, not more vacation rentals. And so it would keep both the accessory dwelling unit and the main house as long-term rental issues to open up more housing in Lee. That, I believe, is what they're trying to write up. Sure, no problem. No problem.
Nice and clear.
Okay. We'll see what they come up with.
Can I make a comment while we're?
You'll have to ask the moderator.
Uh, one second. How close are we, town council?
My handwriting's illegible, so.
Well, we know why.
Serious, that's just rude.
There you go.
His isn't much better.
I'm doing my best.
All right, why don't we keep going with comments so we can keep both angles going? Ms. Bailey?
So I think another thing that would be useful for us to think about as a town is how do we want to develop?
And how do we want to use our assets and our own property? And what, for me, in the pandemic, I'd be much more interested in having a tiny, a couple of tiny houses where I have my office and I've got, you know, a place where I can do other things. So I'm not saying, I'm not opposed to this, I think this is great, but I do think we should think about more flexibility as we go along. And as the town begins to grow and the Berkshires, I hope, becomes more growth-oriented, you know, we've lost ten or fifteen percent of our population in the last twelve years. So as we think about our future, let's think about our flexibility, let's think about adaptive reuse, let's think about the assets that we have all through town and how we utilize them for our benefit. And that includes, you know, maybe tiny houses, maybe other things, but flexibility is the key.
Let's, uh, read your motion to amend.
Can I ask a question about the motion to amend?
Not yet, hold.
Have, have to read the motion first. So Jim Harding, one-thirty Orchard Street. I've moved to amend Article eight to read, no property containing an ADU shall be offered or utilized in any way for short-term rental.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Renier.
I read the motion, please.
It's number seven, isn't it? Mr. Donovan was in line.
No, I'm, I'm just, if there's any questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Cornelia Kalashnikov, I just want to understand the motion. So if I have a property, my house, and I have another building on my property, I could not live in my other property and then rent my house? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
As a short, as a short-term rental, you can rent both the accessory dwelling unit and your home and live in either one, but you wouldn't be able to put either one on as a short-term rental. They have to be thirty days or less is generally a short-term. Does that make sense, Cornelia?
Could you rent out one room?
Um, that would still be a short-term rental.
Okay, thank you.
If, if it's for less than thirty days.
Okay, any more debate on the motion?
I oppose, Josh Blum, two-oh-four West Park Street. I oppose the amendment because I think it restricts the ability of a homeowner to use their property for a short-term rental in any circumstances. I think if you wanted to look towards that, I know that some of the other towns, I think Stockbridge, looked at this question, and part of what they were looking at was whether or not the homeowner was present in the, the primary residence at the time of renting out for a short-term rental of the ADU. And only under those circumstances was it acceptable for the secondary unit. So that's another way to sort of slice this, this subset issue, but I would say that personally, I oppose this amendment.
Go ahead.
I, Hayden again, one-sixty-five Main Street. Yeah, I guess I would have to agree with Josh there that, you know, on one hand, we're allowing single homes and residential units to be bought up. allowing single homes and residential units to be bought up and claim the improvements as, you know, business expenses, claim the income as business expenses, pay income tax on the profits, all in a residential area. But if you put a secondary apartment because you bought a house that was a little bit above your means, you want to rent it out for subsidize the cost while still living in there, we're not allowing that. It just seems to me that our priorities are a little misaligned. And it, you know, single-family homes in Lee that cost under $400,000 are really in scarce unless you're trying to rent them on Airbnb, and then you can, you know, have your pick. And this kind of further, in my opinion, you know, encourages that. With, you know, big vacation homes with accessory dwelling units or mansions over $1 million, we want those vacation rentals. We want people, 10 to 15 people coming in, spending $1,000 a night, giving us big tax money, filling up these rooms. And, you know, and we also want young families who can afford a $300,000 home to be there. And I just think that this, these kind of both are fighting against each other.
Ma'am?
Caroline M. Eastley. I'm confused, Gordon. There is an apartment in my house which I rent. I've had tenants there for 10 years, so that's not short-term. But I do do kind of a little guest house. I work with a B&amp;B in Stockbridge, and they, when they can get them, have kids from all over the world, and they're wonderful kids. I've had them from Russia, Kazakhstan, Africa, over the years. And they're with me for short terms, not, they're in my house, they're in my guest room. I've had them take over my kitchen, so I can't cook. I've had them live on just candy. But they're in my home, they're with me, and they're pretty fabulous kids. And are you saying that I can't do that?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that, I should let the Planning Board discuss it, but the term "short-term rental" means 30 days or less.
Well, some of them are there that long and some aren't.
I'm just saying, it, this is, this is what we're voting on tonight.
Okay.
I'm just saying that that's the terminology that we're using. And I think from the Planning Board meetings I sat in on and listened to, the issue of the ADU wasn't to increase somebody's ability to have a short-term rental. The ADU was set up to, so that we could give younger people or retirees or whatever a place to live permanently. I mean, everybody's complaining, oh, we don't have a place to live, we don't have, you know, there aren't enough rentals.
These kids are never going to be here like that.
I'm just saying, they're just, I know, that's, I'm not talking specific to your situation. I'm just saying, in general, what I got out of the Planning Board meetings was that we're trying to open up properties, and by the way, this may become a mandatory ADU issue through the Commonwealth. I just read about it the other day. It's one of Healy's big things is to make kind of a sweeping zoning change on ADU. So we'll wait and see if that happens. But the issue is that, let the Planning Board talk about it more. So I was just trying to define the 30 days or less issue.
Okay.
And I'm not going into pre-existing situations like yours. That's all. The Planning Board should talk about it.
Planning Board have anything to say about this?
I do. I?
Go ahead.
I'm not the Planning Board, I'm just one of the members. But I'm regrettably against this amendment. I want to explain the context. We've had a policy of not allowing any detached ADUs in town. We think that that's probably unreasonably restrictive, given the current demand for housing and a lot of other factors. And we wanted to make a modest step forward toward allowing this for the first time. Detached ADUs, we've already had, you know, upstairs apartments galore, but detached ADUs is a step, and we wanted to see if we could do it in such a way that would make desirable housing, longer-term housing, available. So the idea was to liberalize our rules to allow for more housing. What I think the amendment is, as I understand it, is it would, in some cases, restrict and be more restrictive than the present law. And that is, take, take this situation, an upstairs apartment and a downstairs apartment that the homeowner lives in. If this amendment passes, the upstairs apartment is an ADU and could not be short use for short-term rental, if I understand it correctly. That would be a new restriction that was not intended. Thank you.
I want to give some practice.
Mr. Harding?
So, you know, I can't say that I've been trying to parse out all the particulars for the last three months because I haven't. It's occurred to me while I was just reading this particular new bylaw. And so that, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another. I'm not trying to restrict people's ability to use their properties. What I am trying to do is keep properties that exist already off of the short-term rental market. So we don't have people coming in being like, well, you know, okay, well, you can't rent out the detached one, but you can rent out the main house. So, great, we'll buy it with the detached house, and we'll just rent out the main house, and it's still off the market for short, you know, for people who want to live here, establish something, you know, have my kids move back to Lee and be a part of the community. They can't afford anything. So I would love to have a detached, you know, unit on my house and be able to have my kids live in it for a few years or forever, more likely, until they got on their feet and were able to afford something else. I love that model, and I love the model of the parents moving into the smaller unit and the kids with a bigger family now being able to move into the main unit. I think that's a great model. And the parents and the kids can, you know, potentially pool together to buy that one property with the knowledge that they're both going to live on. So I think the idea of allowing a detached unit while still allowing the main house to be used for short-term rentals, I think directly opposes what the purposes of this section are. And the purpose of the section are to provide homeowners with a mean of obtaining rental income, not necessarily short-term rentals, companionship, security, and personal services, and thereby enable homeowners to stay more comfortably in homes and neighborhoods they might not, they might otherwise be forced to leave. That's the first paragraph in the, that's the founding document, the mission statement. So, you okay with me reading? Okay. So, are you okay with me reading again?
Please.
So this is paragraph A, Purpose and Intent. It says, "The purpose of this section are to, number one, provide homeowners with a mean of obtaining rental income, companionship, security, and personal services, and thereby to enable homeowners to stay more comfortably in homes and neighborhoods they might otherwise be forced to leave." I don't think any of us are going to be against that. But if you say that maybe some people who aren't necessarily scrupulous and don't care about that are going to, you know, I think there's a possibility that they can move into the detached unit and short-term rental their main unit, or they can just buy the whole thing and say, well, we're going to charge enough to be able to cover the cost of that detached unit, and wait for the bylaws to change when they can rent out both. So I am certainly not, immune is the wrong word, but I am fully cognizant of the need for more housing in Lee, but that needs to be long-term housing, not opportunities for short-term housing. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for a really interesting discussion tonight on many levels. Thank you for this meeting. My name's Patricia Martin. I live at 171 West Park Street, Lee. When I bought a house in Lee in 2000, it was a very big house. It was a, it had an apartment, an attached apartment, a mother-in-law's kind of apartment. And it already had someone renting it out, so I could afford it. But it was still too big for me. As you know, many of the historic houses in Lee are gigantic. They were not built even for single residencies. And so the town assured me, I went to the board of health, I got it inspected to have something called Berkshire B&amp;B. And in the summer, because we have so many people who come as tourists in the summer, I was able to rent the space to people who would come to Tanglewood specially, you know, sometimes to Berkshire Opera Company. So there were lots of needs for short-term rentals. And without that opportunity, I could not have afforded to keep a home as a single woman. And so family models are really changing over time, and I think we have to keep in mind all of the architecture of the town and the uses, the needs for housing that are also short-term, and how to make it equitable. So I think that it's just a good, a good thing to keep all these ideas in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Bailey? It's your second time.
Thank you. I'll be careful. Question for the Planning Board, actually, for a clarification on the ADU issue, and you may wish to have Peter answer this, just because it goes back to a short-term rental issue. Within the short-term rentals that we just passed, isn't there a section in there that talks about it's not going to affect if you're a legitimate bed and breakfast and lodging according to, and I need to make sure people understand, that we have three types of bed and breakfast establishments allowed, one by right, two by special permits. And if someone were to go through that process, then even though you're renting it on a short term, if you're a legitimate, gone through the special permit process of bed and breakfast, that you wouldn't be considered short-term rental by definition.
That's right.
I just want to get this clarified to the, to the building, to everybody here.
That's right, Gordon. There are some exceptions that are not affected here. And one of them is any kind of bed and breakfast. Another one, that's very important, is a regular month-to-month rental. So if you rented your, one of your bedrooms or a suite to someone for three months on month-to-month rental payment, that's not a short-term rental.
I'm not, that's what we're going for. All right, those in favor of the amendment? Do I remember the amendment? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right.
Do a clicker amendment.
We're going to do a clicker vote here, okay? Because we need two-thirds on this. Can we get the? I can read the, I'll read the proposed text. I have the proposed text.
You need to clarify that one.
The amendment only needs a majority.
Right. The amendment's only a majority, yes. Okay.
If someone asked to make a clear reading of the amendment.
Yes. Okay, the amendment, okay, the amendment reads, let's see, I move to amend Article 8 to read, "No property containing an ADU," this handwriting's not much better, sorry. "Adu shall be offered or utilized in any way for short-term rental, for short-term
No property containing an ADU will be, yeah.
Shall be offered.
Either the ADU or the property that, it is, it is on the same property, if you have an ADU, no short-term rentals.
But the ADU could be a short-term.
No.
No, neither can.
So period, no.
Period, no. Neither the ADU nor the principal dwelling.
No, amendment's a majority. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
This is to amend Article 8.
Sit up. Everybody get your votes in. Madam Clerk, please close the vote.
What is it? Forty-four, so no.
Okay, 44 in favor, 52 opposed, four abstentions. The motion fails. All right, back the amendment. Yes, Article number seven, back to Article number seven. Or eight, sorry. All right, one debate, right?
Cornelia Callisher. So, let's see, Section C also, I have a question and then possible amendment, believe it or not, but I first have a question. So let me find it here. Oh, gosh. Yes, number five, under Section C, it says parking. The site plan for every lot with an ADU shall include at least three off-street parking spaces. And I'm wondering first, why three instead of two? That's my question. And then if, and then I'd like to have the possibility of amending, but I'd like that answered first.
Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we figured two for the main dwelling and then one for the accessory dwelling. That's how we came up with three.
Yeah, that's right.
So this is, but I, how I read it was...
Every lot with an ADU.
I see. It's not that the ADU has to have three spaces. Okay. Then I, I won't amend it. Thank you.
Josh Bloom, 204 West Park Street. I have two concerns, one that was addressed and, to some extent, voted down in the amendment, which is that in C7, it prohibits the ADU unit from being rented for short-term. And I think that's restrictive to a point that's unfair because it, to the homeowner that we have not grandfathered this in, to people who are already property owners, so people who bought their home with an accessory dwelling with, I understand that the law was perhaps vague already, and maybe it was illegal to rent it out, but I think that it causes a concern that the people who have bought this beforehand are now restricted. I could see it going forward. And then the second thing I want to point out is that in six, it says only one home occupation is permitted per lot. Many households have now two people working from home and running businesses from home. I think one business from home is restrictive.
I just want to address one, one component of Mr. Bloom's concern, which is those properties that are currently in use, since this is a zoning amendment, the traditional grandfathering principles would apply. So, in other words, a zoning bylaw, if it is silent on grandfathering, it doesn't affect that principle at law. So existing uses that existed at the time that zoning is amended are still pre-existing non-conform, we use, we use the term grandfathering, but the actual term is pre-existing non-conforming uses. So those are legal if they pre-exist zoning. The other one I'll leave to the Planning Board, which is, his other concern was that I think you're restricting it to one, one owner occupied. You set the property?
Yes, you're correct. We just did one ADU. That's, it was a lot of discussion, right? I mean, yeah, that, there was a lot of discussion about it.
From zero to one.
Yeah.
I think that as we go to more and more ways to move around, pedestrians, bikes, motor scooters, electric scooters, that having, mandating parking spaces is a silly thing to do at this juncture. I know we're a car culture this week, but we won't be forever. So... So I don't think we should include a mandate for parking. A suggestion would be great.
Any further debate? Seeing none? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no?
No.
The ayes have it. Want to do a click vote? I think they had it. We're going to do a click count. Click vote.
Article eight.
Article eight. Original. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. All right, Madam Clerk, please close the vote. Sixty in favor, 22 opposed, six abstentions, the motion passes, right? Two thirds, right?
Do we have the green up there? I can't see the screen that good.
Okay, last article, Article nine.
We got too many options here. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaws by adding the definitions as published in the warrant to 199-14.1 of the existing bylaw to be located alphabetically within that section.
Second. Any debate?
We need to clarify that at the bottom of the sheet, there are two options.
I can't hear you. Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, the mic, sorry.
Actually, on my motion sheet, it didn't give me that. So you need option A moved as the motion?
I, I need the motion to include option A.
Okay.
Because ASTR did pass.
No problem. Well, it was blank here, and I didn't figure which, okay.
Can you just fix it by amending your motion?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, could I restate my motion?
Surely.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding the definitions as published in the warrant to Section 199-14.1 of the existing bylaw to be located alphabetically within, as listed as option A within that section.
Second. Mr. Renier, seconded. Any debate on this?
It's okay.
We listed this separately because we weren't sure if only eight was going to be passed. So now that it has, we know which option to use.
Okay, seeing no more debate, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Motion passes. The amendment passes. No, not yet.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to congratulate you on your first town meeting. I thought you did a pretty good job. So thank you.
Well, now, now I regret calling you out on your second time. All right.
Do we have to back the main motion?
Hold on. I'd like to thank the, you're not running this meeting anymore. Just want to say thanks to the members of the Finance Committee. Of course, that brings us to the end, end of the meeting, so I will entertain that motion to dissolve.
I'd like that we dissolve.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.